All right, you second your readers, uh, lead us, please? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, and we'll begin with roll call.
Good evening, Board Member Su.
Here.
Board Member Ariza.
Present.
Board Member Wang.
Here.
Board Member Sahaba.
Present.
And President Sisneros.
Here.
And so we have a quorum and two excused absences.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next agenda item, which is any agenda changes?
No.
Okay, great. Uh, we'll move on to non-agenda public comments. Um, does anyone in the public, whether on Zoom or here in the room, have any comments that they would like to, um, bring forth? You have up to three minutes for any items that are not on the agenda.
Looks like we've got Kurt Peterson.
Or non-agenda? Yeah. And it's basically, my name is Kurt Peterson, I live over on the West End, uh, on the 200 block of Santa Clara. And, um, I'm slightly concerned with the no right turn signs that are on Apizado Way, um, at Main Street, at everyone that goes across, uh, all the cross streets that go across Apizado Way between, uh, what, uh, Webster and Main, including, uh, Main. Uh, you have these wonderful new signs that you put up that say, uh, no right turn on red. And I understand why it's there because there is a bike path that goes along there. The problem with it is, uh, that you can visibly see the bike path very clearly, both directions. So there's no problems far as that. I just don't understand why they couldn't get a sign that just said, beware of bikes. Something of that nature because especially on the Third Street, which is where, uh, uh, the Learning Center, ALCL, or whatever it is, the old Woodstock School. That right there during 3:00, when they're picking up students and you can't turn right to get out of there is totally a mess. It's more of a detriment by far than, you know, the potential as far as any bicycle, you know, incident there. So I'm wondering, other cities, I go all around, have it listed as far as beware of bikes. You know, bikes have the right of way going across, whatever you want to state, you can do that. But to say you can't turn on right can really make that a congestion problem big time. So I would like to see if someone could possibly, you know, look into who came up with that idea. And is there other ways to remedy it and make it a lot better for everyone, both cars and bicycles and pedestrians? Thank you very much.
Thank you for bringing up that concern. Are there any other, uh, non-agenda public comments?
I have no other speakers, no hands raised.
Okay, great. We'll move on, uh, to Agenda Item 4, Consent Calendar. Um, we have two meeting minutes. Does anyone have any comments or would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the, the draft meeting minutes for April 14 and April 28, 2025.
Okay.
I just need to abstain for the 14th.
Okay, got it. Board Member Su, oops. All right, any other comments or motion, uh, anyone want to second the motion? Uh, yes, um.
I can, I can second.
Okay, great. Um, and with that, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose? And we have two absences, so, and one abstention for the April 14 meeting minutes. And then, is that recorded? Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. All right, we'll go ahead and move into the regular agenda item section. This is a workshop for the Pacific Fusion Facility, R&amp;D Facility.
Good evening, President Sisneros and members of the Planning Board. I am Alan Tai, the Planning, Building and Transportation Director. If I could just have a minute to, uh, really kick off this workshop, uh, I would appreciate letting the board know that, uh, this project that is before you tonight isn't just any regular development project that you have seen. Number one, it is a job generating use. I don't believe this board has seen a proposal, uh, that is employment generating use since maybe Exo-Lexus in 2018, 2019? Or if you want to count the Harbor Bay Hotel, uh, that was several years ago back in 2021. So it's been a while since this city has seen a, uh, job generating use before this board. But also want the board to understand kind of the history and the context. This project is occurring at Alameda Point in an area that the city of Alameda and the community for the last 20 years has been planning for job generating uses. We, uh, originally adopted an amendment to the 1990 general plan to facilitate uses like this. We then subsequently adopted a new general plan in our, uh, General Plan 2040 EIR that continues that vision for having a robust job-focused development, um, tech industry at, at this location at Alameda Point. Uh, we also have existing zoning that supports these uses. And supporting those policy documents is a very robust environmental impact report that the city adopted in 2014. So, uh, make no mistake, the proposal before you is consistent with the city land use policies and the planning that this community has been doing for the last 20 years. Really, we're here before you tonight is, uh, as regulators, we still have to issue permits, entitlements and approvals. So we have to go through, review the project against adopted codes and regulations, dot our Is, cross our Ts. Uh, we are doing supplemental SEQA work, uh, to ensure that this project and the specifics of the project meets all of the, uh, policies and land use regulations that we've put in place. But otherwise, this is an important project and also because Pacific Fusion, uh, being clean tag, the, the prospects of having zero carbon energy generation is also consistent with the city's vision that's established in our climate action plan. So there are many things that are great about this project, but we also understand that we need to fit the project within codes and adopted regulations. And really, we're here tonight to kind of, uh, talk to you about the specifics. And I think what would be very helpful for staff and the applicant, um, tonight is if you have any questions, uh, about the project or any sort of specific comments or concerns, raise them and give us that direction so that we have clear path forward to bring this back for a decision relatively soon. And with that, I would like to introduce Brian McGuire, our project planner, to, uh, continue the presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, President Sisneros and members of the Planning Board. My name is Brian McGuire, Planner 2, here to just do a little more introduction, um, and present the staff report for the Pacific Fusion Research and Development Facility. Our goals for the workshop tonight are, um, essentially include to get the board and the community a little more familiar with the draft development proposal, provide a little bit more of that regulatory context and historical context to assist the Planning Board with your role to review and hopefully approve, uh, the development plan and design review applications as those come before you. Get board and community feedback on the plan, the proposed use and the project design. And finally, we'll ask you to consider appointing a subcommittee to help us, uh, and the project team, um, with any potential revisions to the project design as we move forward rather rapidly, hopefully. I'll let the applicant introduce themselves a little bit more, but, um, Pacific Fusion's a clean energy startup company, consists, uh, considering Alameda Point for a state-of-the-art, uh, headquarters to develop a commercially viable approach to fusion power. Alameda is competing with, uh, the city of Livermore for the project. Of course, we think Alameda Point is a fantastic spot for this kind of transformative project and is precisely the kind of user long envisioned to begin the transformation of the Enterprise District at Alameda Point, as our Director Alan Tai, uh, just explained. The vision for the Enterprise District has always been as a jobs hub to help replace the 18,000 jobs lost when the Navy left town. Um, the Enterprise District is not part of the NAS Alameda Historic District. So the infield guidelines and cultural landscape report that you're familiar with would not apply to this site. The Enterprise District zoning is designed to be very flexible, um, to allow a wide range of uses, including office, R&amp;D, industrial, um, high-tech manufacturing and more. Provides a 100-foot height limit in the zoning district and flexible building setbacks. The proposed, the, the proposed facility before you is about 225,000 square feet. It's located at the future intersection of Orion Street and West Ticonderoga. And it would have a mix of office, lab and R&amp;D space. The applicant's team will walk you through the design in more details, but if you look at the second elevation here, looking east from Orion Street, you can see sort of the right half of the building, which would contain the office and lab space. And then the larger building mass housing the, what they call the pulser, uh, which is their demonstration equipment they hope to, to build, um, to sort of prove the viability of their technology. We are not asking you to make a SEQA determination to this evening. This is just a workshop. But the, as our Director said, the environmental review process, which is well underway. Um, we're very confident in the path we're on with the SEQA review. We've really taken sort of a belt and suspenders approach, um, to our review. The city, uh, including your predecessors, have done lots and lots of work in the past to analyze the redevelopment of the base. City Council has certified the Alameda Point, EIR, which contemplated over 2 million square feet of office, R&amp;D and light industrial types of uses at the base, as well as the General Plan EIR, which anticipated over 12,000 new jobs in the city with a particular concentration in our, um, priority development areas, including Alameda Point. Pacific Fusion is also, uh, regulated by the California Department of Public Health and will be following all applicable requirements, um, for handling of the materials, uh, that they use in their process. Let them speak to that in more detail. We anticipate the project will be able to rely on, um, a statutory streamlining exemption, um, pursuant to SEQA, pending the completion of, uh, the very thorough review, which is well underway. Sort of analyzing all the project specifics and making sure it's compliant with all of our plans and policies, um, that, and that we're not missing anything unique, um, with this project. Because of the nature of the project and the compressed schedule, we are requesting you appoint, uh, up to three members to an ad hoc subcommittee. We anticipate potentially one to three meetings over the summer, um, to provide, to help the staff and project team provide input on potential design refinements. As mentioned, Pacific Fusion has a very aggressive milestone schedule. We expect they'll select a preferred location, um, this year, um, pending resolution of various purchase and entitlement processes. Since that clock is ticking, we are reviewing, you're reviewing the plans at the same time that city departments are conducting our internal review in order to expedite that review. And our Baser Use Director and her team are, he are working on the purchase option, which will be before City Council next month, um, which will include a package of backbone infrastructure improvements, which we believe will help catalyze the redevelopment of the Enterprise District. The infrastructure being the big thing that's sort of holds the opportunities back at Alameda Point because it's that obsolete, um, Navy, World War II era infrastructure. And we expect to return to the board just before or just after your August recess for project approvals. At this point, if there are no pressing clarifying questions, I'd like to hand it over to the Pacific Fusion team, um, to tell you more about the company and the project. Courtney, this is Courtney Richardson.
Good evening. Hi, President Sisneros, sorry, Sisneros and, uh, members of the Planning Board. Can everybody hear me okay? Great. Thank you so much for taking the time today. We're really excited to give you guys a little bit more information about our company and what we're proposing. Uh, my name is Courtney Richardson. I'm the Infrastructure Lead, uh, with Pacific Fusion. Work alongside Alex Doniak, who is, is our Head of Communications. Pacific Fusion, so we are a startup fusion company and we, let me, uh, so we were founded in late 2023, anchoring off of the innovations and breakthroughs that happened here in Alameda County at the Lawrence Livermore National Laboratory. So the National Ignition Facility, um, is also another fusion facility. And, um, members of the scientific community achieved something called, uh, fusion ignition. And that's where we achieved more energy out than what was put in. Uh, this event signaled the, uh, private equity industry and the scientific community to really move this technology to the next step, get it out of the lab and, uh, start commercializing this. So we are one of the companies, one of the few companies, commercializing fusion for, um, energy. Why do we want to be in Alameda? There are so many reasons. Alameda is a, a very rich and vibrant community, both from, uh, residential standpoint, but also from a business community standpoint. Um, we just got back from an event with a number of business community members and we are very, we have always been impressed ever since we started citing and looking at this location. Uh, the, the innovation that you already have here is very inspiring and we feel as though we fit neatly into what you, what you already have kind of going on at Alameda Point and Harbor Bay. Um, we've met with members of CASA and you guys have a very diligent, resilient and climate action plan. We are a clean energy tech company looking to provide renewable energy at a low cost globally. So what would we bring to Alameda? Uh, there's a number of tangible aspects. So we recently unveiled in October of last year, uh, we would be bringing over a billion dollars in investment to this community. Um, we would have 250 direct jobs at this facility. So we're currently growing and ramping up our employment base. We'll be at 100 very soon, but this facility will be home to about 250 employees. Um, some of the deal structures that we're currently working on with staff, Abby's team, would provide that backbone infrastructure for, uh, parts of the Enterprise District. So in many ways, we could catalyze, um, what could be an innovation hub for your business number two and business number three, they could come in and plug into that backbone infrastructure. Uh, the fusion industry right now is kind of the shiny, shiny penny of the tech industry. It used to be EVs, it used to be batteries. Fusion is, is kind of a hot topic conversation, not only in the United States, but also internationally. There's a bit of competition with China and being the first country to commercialize fusion is going to be a big step in not only national security, but being the home of the innovation that's able to provide low-cost energy, um, to its consumer bases is a nice feather in the cap. Um, we've already talked with a number of members of the community, uh, during our outreach program that Alex has been leading. So we've talked with President Dixon. Um, we've also participated in a career fair at Ensign Mall High School. Uh, part of being a part of this community is realizing that there is a diverse, uh, technical base here, not just white collar, but blue collar technicians, and that's, that's hard to find across the Bay Area. And we've talked with President Dixon about pulling together programs that could work both ways. So fusion, many people say that fusion is the holy grail of power generation. It's safe, it's clean, it's on demand and the fuel is abundant and nearly free. Our demonstration system, although it looks a little unique, um, can parallel to, um, other demonstration systems that are here in Alameda County. So I mentioned the National Ignition Facility. The National Ignition Facility is another fusion facility. This is not a power plant, so one of the, the key takeaways is we're not generating kilowatt hours. We're not generating electricity. This is an R&amp;D project to achieve ignition. The National Ignition Facility achieved ignition through their own technology and their own methodologies. We have our own secret sauce in doing so and believe it's going to be much more efficient than the lasers that were used at the National Ignition Facility. Safety is a top priority to us. Part of the engagement that we're doing is to get ahead of a lot of the questions and concerns that naturally come about with our use and the type of radiological materials that we're going to be handling. At a fundamental level, we are handling radiological materials, but we're not inventing a safety protocol or process to manage these materials appropriately. The protocols and processes are already in place. The California Department of Public Health manages that process the same way they do a healthcare facility, a research university facility, um, or a life science facility. So those uses who handle radiological materials will be following the same protocol that we follow. We've partnered with an incredible team, so Pacific Fusion has partnered with Heinz. We have Mario in the, in the audience and we also have Teresa from HPA. And we'll talk a little bit about the team that we pull together, uh, that will be your design contacts as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And kindly, um, speak closer to the mic, about three inches is helpful for folks on Zoom listening in.
Good evening, Planning Board members. My name is Mario Chia, I'm with Heinz. Heinz is an owner, developer, manager of around $90 billion worth of real estate globally. Uh, we've been in the Bay Area for more than five decades and we manage around $4.2 billion of assets, uh, under management. Very excited to bring to you today our 220,000 square foot facility that we're partnering with Pacific Fusion on. Like many of our other projects in the Bay Area, like the Salesforce Tower or One Vanderbilt in New York City, uh, we take, uh, build, we take a very long-term view approach to our, to the buildings that we build. We design buildings to last and stand the test of time. Uh, we couldn't do it alone. We've assembled a great team. Uh, our lead architect is HPA, they're quite prolific, uh, in the advanced manufacturing space. We've, we're also leveraging our relationship, uh, with Torin Tomasetti, who's our structural engineer, and as well as Myers Plus, uh, who's our MEP engineer, to bring together a project that Alameda will be proud of, Heinz will be proud of, Pacific Fusion will be proud of. Um, with that, just wanted to transition this over to Teresa, who's going to walk through, uh, the site plan and, and the project in greater detail.
Hi, Teresa Goodwin with HPA Architects. We're located in Oakland and we do design industrial buildings. That's our primary focus. Let's see. Okay, so as a way of introduction, the site location is indicated there and I'll be zooming in, showing you the detailed site and elevations. We're honored to be a part of this project. It's exciting to be a part of the catalyst of Alameda Point. And so far, we've been at the Town Hall, which was earlier this month. Tonight, we're here in the middle at 5:12 and 5:31 is Family Fusion Day. I'll be working to get my 13-year-old to come visit and that will be a neat opportunity to learn more about Pacific Fusion. This project, though, has started quite earlier than 5:1. So Pacific Fusion has been working on the design of this facility for about two years, working on the inner workings of the technology and the infrastructure. HPA joined in February of this year. At that time, a lot of the building footprint was set and, for those specific needs. So then our role was to figure out how does this building fit on the site and what does it look like? The office location and footprint was determined, that is in the lower right of the, the, this is a site plan, but the floor plan is there and I colored them different colors. So the office is the lower, uh, right. The laboratory is the lower left. That bottom square is all about the same height. So that's about 48 feet tall total, you'll see that in the elevations. So, single story for industrial. The square above that labeled demonstration equipment, that is the taller portion, about 100 feet tall to the parapet. That's what was referred to as the demonstration equipment or the pulser. Though, that's where there's a larger piece of equipment in there. And then off to the right, on the top is a utility building where the electrical room, fire pump room and other infrastructure needs for the facility will be located. And that is a lower section of the building, again, about the same 48 feet. The office being on the lower right of the building, we located the auto parking to the right of it. There is not room to put it on the bottom side of the page. And really, we like orienting the building straight to the street and creating this street wall along Ticonderoga and getting the office auto parking close to the entrance at the office, but adjacent to the street. All of the cars will enter and exit off of Ticonderoga. The top portion of the site is the yard area. This is where, uh, products will come in and out of the facility. We've located several drive-in doors that are required for access. There are a couple of tanks indicated that are about 30-foot tall max. Those are needed for the, uh, equipment, for, for the various utility needs. And on the right side of the page, outside of the utility room is another drive-in ramp, the transformers and other electrical equipment needed for the function of the building. On the left side of the site, there is a fire lane. This was one of the requirements that came up as we were meeting with the fire department. The fire department requires ladder truck access to the building, meaning they can get to the top of the building. And that has certain requirements of how close the fire truck can get to the building. They need to be able to get to the lower and the higher section of the building. So the only way we could make that access work was to provide the fire lane on-site. What that accomplished is it pushed the building a little bit further from the street. So it ended up with a benefit and we don't have this 100-foot tall wall right adjacent to Orion. We now have a landscape buffer and it meets the functional requirement of getting the fire department to both the high and low sections of the roof. The lower section access will be on the auto parking side. Next is to elevate the building and I'm not going to spend a lot of time here because of scale. I want to zoom in and show you some of the other pieces, uh, within the elevation themselves. But, uh, just for context, because there's higher and section, the higher and lower sections are here. The, the taller portion is the, the pulser, the demonstration area. And on the top elevation, on the, the one on the top, uh, is from Pacific. So you see really the large section, but the little section off to the left, that's the utility building where the electrical pump room will be located. The second elevation down is the west elevation from Orion. So you see the taller section where the demonstration equipment will be. And we've really broken, broken down this mass more, uh, because it's closer to the street. And I'm going to talk a little bit about the, uh, inspiration behind the vertical elements. The lab then orients towards Orion and that's the lower section. And we're really treating that design quite a bit differently because it's lower. And so the articulation and the design is different. As you, the third elevation down, the south, uh, fronting Ticonderoga, I, I'm showing that, um, pulser behind. But really, that, uh, second half of the elevation, it says metal panel beyond, is, is quite a bit back. So you'll never really experience the building in that way along Ticonderoga. It's just shown for reference. You can see how the, all four sides wrap around. And then the bottom elevation is Skyhawk. So this is the primary office entrance on the lower left and glazing along the entire auto parking side. That's where the office is located to provide natural light into the office. Then the demonstration steps up, the demonstration portion, and the lower section is the utility building on the bottom right. Let's talk about how we designed this elevation and why. The top four are pictures from buildings in Alameda. Alameda has a certain character and so things that I see in Alameda are, are long linear, um, paint and windows. But you see this, this really long use of elevation, so we've linear paint and windows, but you see this really long use of elevation. So we've picked that up in our elevation. You also see a lot of these smaller window panes, and I see those in older industrial buildings. And I wouldn't necessarily always use smaller window panes, but I really like that look of pulling from those older buildings and bringing it into our building in a different way. We're taking more of a modern take, but those small window panes we use at the elevation are a way of pulling in some of that Alameda character. I also really like the tall elements that you see with the linear vertical window treatment on the left image. So we're using that as really kind of an anchor for our elevation, and we're pushing and pulling it in different ways. We're also using this steel or kind of aluminum element popping out from the elevation to break down the rhythm of the elevation. The blue, this is a little bit different from what you all saw since we submitted. We've coordinated with Pacific Fusion's branding color. So this is a slight tweak of this blue that's shown here. So that's actually from their branding to help build their brand and image on the elevation, similar to what we submitted, but it is slightly different. Okay, so that was the lower portion focused on the office. Now, looking at the higher portion at the demonstration facility, we've really treated this section differently. It's 100 feet tall, so it is different. We're working on having them have similar language between, but this section is quite a bit larger, so we're using a different amount of articulation and of interest, really picking up on the long linear elements, but they're quite a bit higher. The lower section will have quite a bit of landscaping in between the building and the street, so we have not taken as much interest in the lower section. Picture that being kind of more as a backdrop to the landscaping, and then providing the attention and detail up above these sections that will be seen from further away. Again, picking up on those vertical elements within the interior of the blue section. And the lower right, this is the lab portion. We are using that gray paint among the windows to create this long ribbon window feel. We also prepared some 3D rendering, so you could see how it's coming together. This is a rendering. There's an arrow there on the site plan, the purple arrow. So this is the lower right corner of the site plan, and this is showing the main entrance. So here you see how, on the vertical elements within the blue, we're pulling out a metal frame to get some interest and play with shadow and articulation there. And then beyond that, you see where we're stepping the building back. We've also added this protrusion of a vertical element that we picture being kind of like a storefront-type material, a metal material. So we've spent time at creating this real interest at the corner. That's the impact, and we want it to stand out. We're using the smaller window panes. And then beyond that, we let the horizontal reveals and paint, and the lower windows continue for the office design. And here you see the pulser, the demonstration, pushed further back, so you see that panel beyond, more from how you'd see it from a pedestrian view. And now, this is going to the other corner of the building. So this is one of the corners of the site that has a really great view, a view of the bay. So we are looking to activate this corner, and one of the things we're currently studying is if we can improve the use of this corner, likely bringing in a tenant amenity area. We're thinking a break area. There are quite a large number of employees, so we want to make sure that they have an adequate space to eat outside. And this corner, I think, is a likely place to be able to get some seating, and it would liven this corner, but also it has the best view, too, for employees. And maybe also a separate seating area over on the right, and I'll show that to you in a moment. But that's not yet really reflected in this rendering, so just want to point out, we're still studying how to bring that together in the site plan. Here, we are not showing any low-level storefronts, so right now, we've kept no glazing on the lower level, and that's partly because we're still working through what are the security needs. So once we have some of those other functions, maybe the glazing can come down, but for now, we've pushed the glazing up where we can get the interest in the elevation, but without creating security concerns. But that's still ongoing in the design. We are using glass, steel. Currently, it's shown all as painted concrete. And I do want to share with you some of the evolution that's ongoing. So the current elevations that you see relative to this third bullet, we're still confirming the materiality and the constructibility. The 100-foot section is a large elevation, and one of our initial studies with a contractor, we thought maybe these could be precast panels, but I think there's a chance that's going to go to more of a metal panel system. The lower sections, I think, will stay as a concrete tilt-up panel, so painted concrete with reveals. But we've started working with our structural engineer, and they're working through those various systems, and it's still being studied. So these are things I do want you to know that we're working on. The size and location of the exterior break areas, we're currently targeting the two green arrow locations. We're confirming the required auto parking based on the employee count, and we may add some auto parking along that fire lane on the left, to be determined. We're going to be working through the employment counts. And then lastly, the materiality may adjust. Once we work through with the structural engineer, the different options, and the facade system, so we can get the architecture and structural engineering coordinated together. That is the end of our presentation. We brought a few other exhibits, but now I'm going to hand it back to staff, and if needed, we can open those back up. Thank you.
Thank you. Any follow-up from staff?
We're here to take your questions. We've got some speaker slips and happy to get feedback from the board and community.
Okay, great. Sounds good. Thank you so much to the applicant and staff for that overview and presentation. I'll bring it back to the board for clarifying questions before we open up for a public comment. Does anyone want to jump in? Yes, Vice President Ariza?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation to the staff and the applicant. I have various questions. So I don't know if, maybe we can look at your presentation, Brian, but I think the last slide had like aerial view of the building. I guess, one thing I wanted to confirm is the plan for Skyhawk Street. Is that is being maintained? It's kind of unclear to me. In some plans, it seems like it is. In others, it seems like it's not, and the block becomes really big. I don't know the answer to that question.
Yeah, that's a great question, and it's a little tricky because we have the, in 2014, along with all the other Alameda Point project approvals, we adopted the master infrastructure plan. We have our city engineer here to speak to specific details if you need further, but essentially, Skyhawk is not in the master infrastructure plan. So the public rights of way that were envisioned in the MIP do account for the possibility of Skyhawk going away as redevelopment occurs. It's sort of a natural, at least interim boundary for this project site as proposed, and could, you know, stay in some form potentially in the future. But as envisioned in the MIP from 2014, it does sort of bound the super block, as you started to describe it. So it's there for now, and it would be there for this, in its current state effectively for now, but the Pacific on the north, Orion on the west, and Ticonderoga on the south would be rebuilt in phases as part of this project and future projects with sort of the full, complete street, Alameda Point backbone infrastructure, full rebuild. And the future of Skyhawk is, I would say, undetermined at the moment.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. But then, Pacific Fusion is acquiring the whole super block? In that case, what is the property line? And I guess I'm asking this because I have questions on how the project connects with the neighborhood that is adjacent to Central, which is a residential neighborhood. Like, is there a plan to... Because this is a very large building, and understandably, I mean, I understand the use, and I think it's a great acquisition for Alameda if we are actually selected. But I also, at the same time, I'm concerned on how these two very different scales are going to be connected. I think, and when, I think we all talked to the applicant before, but I did express that it was important, at least for me, to maintain the character, and I do envision people being able to walk from their houses through sidewalks and just have the same kind of feeling. So I was wondering if there was a plan, if they are actually acquiring the super block?
Yeah, I'll maybe start and then kick it over to our base reuse director to expand on the potential phasing here. I think what you see on the screen here, everything west of the existing Skyhawk is what's currently before you and under consideration. And the future sort of eastern half or third of the super block is potentially part of a future phase or other potential redevelopment with specific uses out there. I'll let Abby expand.
Thank you for the question. Abby Thorne-Liman, Director of Base Reuse and Economic Development for the city. And so, in February, the city council approved an exclusive negotiating agreement with Pacific Fusion that included two phases. So the first phase was to negotiate this project as you see it before you, and what we call an ENA, does allow for us to negotiate a second phase to acquire a portion of the remaining property east of Skyhawk and west of Central Avenue. We have not commenced negotiations on that second phase, and there's a good portion of the land in the middle of that striped area that is still owned by the Navy and has not yet been conveyed to the city as well. So I hear your question is more, or your concern is more about circulation. I can't speak to that, but in terms of property lines, I wanted you to know what we're negotiating and not negotiating right now.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any sustainability goals for this project? I guess this is just a question about specifically this project as an architectural project. I mean, I understand that the use of the building will be to produce clean energy and it's as a research and development use, but for the project itself, are there any sustainability goals?
So at this point, we've done the site plan and the elevations, and our team is kicking off the next step of developing the bigger program, which would look at sustainability opportunities, and we're onboarding MEP. But at this point, the base is that we'll follow Cal Green, and that's the extent of as far as we've gotten.
Thank you. Then, I guess I can continue in the comments. Those are my questions. Yeah. Yes.
All right, great. Thank you. Any other clarifying questions? Or member Sue?
Thank you for the presentation. So one of my questions was about kind of federal regulations or requirements that are at play here. I know there is a requirement, I think one of the things you guys are using has to be acquired from the Department of Energy, if I'm understanding correctly. But I'm just curious, I know there's kind of the state OSHA requirements for radiological, you know, management of radiological substances, but I'm just curious if there are any kind of federal requirements at play as well, besides the storage and handling of that chemical?
Thank you for the question. We will not be regulated at a federal level. We will be regulated at the state level and at the city level. At the state level, we'll manage the radiological license and the maintenance of that radiological license. At the city and county level, we have hazardous material, so we have, you know, Class 3B combustible material that will be managed by the fire department and the city and the county. But those are the two regulatory bodies that we will be working with.
Okay, thank you. And then just a related question, actually. So after you, kind of, the demonstration occurs or the kind of R and D occurs on the property, and you have, is there kind of waste generated at some point? Is that waste then stored and then eventually kind of taken offsite? And can you talk a little bit about how long, you know, waste will be stored there and what that whole process looks like?
Yes. I cannot speak to the timeframes. It's not something that we've worked out yet as far as the quantities. But yes, as part of the radiological license, there's an intake and also disposal process as part of this license. We will be disposing of radiological material, again, in similar format to the way a hospital would. That will be part of the protocol and the plan that we pull together. Our team, our CTO, Keith LaSheen, is working very closely with a certified health physicist or radiation safety officer. We've already reached out to the states to talk about how long it takes to get these licenses and what we need to do. When we initially approached them, they basically said, oh, hey, based on your timeline, come back to us in a year and a half. You know, this process takes about six months. But we said, no, you know, we'd really actually like to go through this process now so we can explain it to people such as yourself and members of the community. We've actually already started that process to understand what does a protocol need to be, what do the occupational, you know, limitations need to be. So I can't speak to the specific details, but we are working through that with our certified health physicist.
Okay, thank you. And then just one more question for you. I appreciate it. In terms of kind of like wastewater that's generated from this process, what does that kind of look like in terms of, like, I guess, is water used in terms of the process, and what is the, I guess, end result of the water?
Great question. Okay, so from a wastewater standpoint, the center of, I'm not sure if we can throw maybe an image of the pulser. The middle portion of that pulser is a massive water tank that holds about 2 million gallons of deionized water. We create deionized water through resin beds. There's no byproduct from that, so there's no fluid or anything that comes off of creating that DI, unlike reverse osmosis where you would get a byproduct. So there's no waste that would come off of this. This water would go through filtration just because it simply picks up dust. We may have some cooling processes. It's something we're working through with the MEP team. Those cooling processes will require cooling towers, potentially cooling towers. It depends on how we specify the equipment. There are different ways to cool processes down, cooling tower, refrigeration loops. So the kind of wastewater from that process would be from a cooling tower where you would have to discharge the water into the sewer. But, long story short, very minimal or none at all.
Thanks. I just have one more question for the architect, actually. Sorry. If we can pull up the plan, there's kind of in the back area, the open space next to the not-apart building, there's that circle that says DI, and I'm just wondering what that means.
That is the deionized water tank.
Oh, okay. Gotcha. All right. Thank you. That's it for me.
Great. Thank you so much. Any other board member questions? Board member Sahiba?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I as well had a meeting with the applicant, a brief one, to go over this project a few weeks back. Just a question, a couple of questions that I had. I was looking at the elevations and starting with the tank, and my fellow board member pointed out, I didn't see these visually represented yet in three dimensions or in the elevation. I was just curious, is there a strategy of materiality or color on these tanks? Because they do have somewhat of a scale to them.
They are not yet represented in elevation. My picture is for them to be a similar monolith of color to the building. They're not intended to stick out, but I would use one of the gray colors that's used along the base of the building for now, and they'll be painted metal tanks, is what I picture.
I see. And then, just another question. I can see that there's, as you were describing, there's still some calibration of the amount of parking that you're going to have, and I see that there's Class 2 bike parking being provided on the outside, I assume for visitors and employees. You'll work out all the internal Class 1 bike parking, I imagine, as part of this, I mean, development?
Correct. Yes. So that will be part of the interior design and looking at where our employees entering, and are those wall-mounted or floor-mounted bike racks? But yes, that will be part of the interior design.
Okay, understood. And then lastly, I did And then lastly, I didn't see anything yet, and I know it's early days, so this is probably still progressing, but site lighting? Could you describe in general what conceptually you all may be looking to do as far as site lighting goes?
Yes, so there will be building-mounted lighting, which will light up quite a bit of the lot. And then where needed, we will add pole-mounted lights at 25 or so feet tall poles with the same fixture, but will be pole-mounted around the perimeter of the site to light the yard and the auto parking. But it has not been designed yet. That's one of the things we're currently working on.
Okay. All right, thank you. Those are my questions, thanks.
Thank you. Did you have any questions for member Ray?
Yeah, I have a few circulation questions. First one for HPA and then the rest for staff. The first question, if we could go to that rendering at the parking lot entrance, it might be a little bit pedantic, but I have to ask, the arrows for ingress and egress there, they're reversed? Is that inadvertent?
It is. The renderer who did this has them backwards. There is a circulation plan, actually, in the appendix. We can go to that. But if you're really curious about circulation, and I asked Mark to fix the arrows, I think we just got the wrong one in the PowerPoint. This is what happens when you go quickly.
No problem, I just wanted to double check.
Yeah. But this is the circulation, so the autos will come in and out in a regular write-in fashion, circulate around the auto parking. And actually, just one edit to this that we're currently working through, because there was a question about Skyhawk, is that we intend to move the access point that's currently shown off Skyhawk to come into our site and connect direct to Pacific instead, so that it's not relying on that existing Skyhawk. So that's one other design evolution that we're working on. But auto parking is on the bottom right, all pretty self-contained. Any truck parking will be within the yard off the left going to Orion, and with an access point will be changing off of Pacific. And then the fire access is not shown, but that will be along the left. And as of right now, we're showing the pedestrian and bicycle connectivity, really just along our frontage, along Orion and Ticonderoga, and that's the ultimate condition once those road sections are built out.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Another circulation question for staff, which I think Vice President Ariza picked up on and we got a response on. So I was going to ask whether the city was vacating that block of Oriskene, but I think we heard from Abby that that's currently under Navy control? Is that, did I understand that right?
Yeah, that's right. Oriskene is in Navy ownership right now, along with some of the mini-storage that's there. And then Skyhawk is not actually a street, per se, but it's a paved way that is used as a street right now. And so as part of this project, they'll be filing a parcel map to create legal lots and establish the right-of-way lines. And at that point, we'd start on the street sections.
Okay, so conveyance of that piece of street is basically part of the creation of this site for Pacific Fusion?
Well, for Orion, Pacific, and Ticonderoga, they would be defined.
If I may, Scott Wickstrom, City Engineer, an answer to your question. When the city basically took over the Navy base from the Navy, we opened all of the roads for public use, but they were never dedicated, per se. So what's shown there in there is existing Skyhawk Street is basically where the roadway exists, but it is not a dedicated right-of-way. As we go through and develop projects such as Site A, the residential site, we basically then map out the individual right-aways, similar to what we're doing on West Midway. We will come through here and do a parcel map where we'll define Pacific, Orion, and Ticonderoga, at least a portion of Ticonderoga. But we're going to leave, at this point, our intention is to leave Skyhawk as a roadway that has not been dedicated to the public. That leaves more flexibility for the city in the future should, when that second phase, which is identified as not a park, comes forward, how we might want to arrange that. And I think Vice President Ariza had the question about pet access. Oriskene may go away. It's not shown in the MIP, in the long-term plan, but the MIP also has Ticonderoga connecting to Central Avenue, so you would gain access at that location as well.
While you're there, can I just clarify? So you just said Oriskene may go away, and I think we also heard from Brian that Skyhawk may go away as well. It's kind of TBD on both.
That is correct.
Okay. Okay, so just, I guess, while you're there, my understanding of the way the site works now is that cars kind of come into this area of Alameda Point along Pacific and then come south on Skyhawk and turn west onto Oriskene, I think. Bikes come in from Central onto Oriskene, this sort of informal barricaded section of Oriskene. But in the future, under this plan, both cars and bikes would be coming in off Pacific and turning south on Orion.
With this plan, as it sits right now, Oriskene would still exist as a roadway, and the bikes could still go through there. They would come to Skyhawk and they would basically have the option of going north or south, north to Pacific, south to Ticonderoga, before going west. So this plan, that's being before you right now, Phase 1 of this block, leaves Skyhawk roadway in place, leaves Oriskene roadway in place. Granted, they're not right-aways, but they will remain as roadways and open to the public for use.
Okay.
In the future, when the second phase happens, Ticonderoga, as part of the MIP, extends to Central, and you'll have a new connection point to Central at that point.
Okay, thank you. I think one more question, maybe for Brian, if you could bring up the last page of the infrastructure plan set that was in our packet. So is this just contextual? I just wanted to understand if what's in the drawing here is under the scope of the applicant, or it's more just about what's happening elsewhere near the site?
Well, I think it does provide a context, and it essentially lays out the public right-of-ways that are envisioned in the MIP. So that's where you don't see Oriskene, and you don't see Skyhawk. And then the street sections, what it really does also is help, as we define the offsite improvements that will be part of the project and where it will fit relative to the yet-to-be-dedicated rights-of-way that haven't been built yet in their final configuration. It defines the street cross-sections that we plan to use around the project site, which will be essentially, at least the immediate frontage of the project site, would be likely part of the package of backbone infrastructure. That's part of the land conveyance requirement, if that makes sense.
Okay, but these aren't part of the applicant's proposal?
Correct. This is, what you have is essentially just the, their plans at the moment were limited to their onsite improvements. And so this exhibit essentially is what staff is using to sort of the menu of options that are on the infrastructure menu as part of the offsite improvements of the project.
Scott Wickstrom, City Engineer, if I may add a little bit to that.
Yeah, please.
Again, going back to when the city took over the base, control of the base, we opened up the roadways for public use, but the right-of-ways were never defined. One of the first things we had to establish before we really got into any length of discussions with Pacific Fusion about where their building was going to be and where their site is, we have to define the right-of-ways first, and then the site follows from that, right? So we had to define exactly where Pacific is, exactly where Orion is, exactly where Ticonderoga is. So and by the same point, we had to determine the widths and, if you will, the roadway cross-sections. So that's really what this was for. This was an exercise that we as staff undertook based on the MIP to establish the locations and right-of-way width for the project. And then the area that's available for development is inscribed within that super block, and then it's further defined by the Phase 1 portion that Pacific Fusion is using.
Okay, thank you. A couple more questions that are not circulation-related. The site, the rectangle that's not part of the site in the northwest corner, could somebody explain to me what's happening there?
Yes, that building is, I believe we call it Building 360. It's part of the Astra, the Rocket Company, which is a big tenant, just mostly on the north side of Pacific is their main building, but they use this building, which is where the Navy would test the jet engine. So it's got that tower where they test their rocket engines. Very unique building that happens to fit the use of one of our primary tenants out there right now. So this essentially site plan reflects the desire to, at least for now, because we can preserve that building for the unique function it serves.
Okay, thank you. And then last question is procedural. So following a potential planning board approval this summer of the development review, it looks like there wouldn't be a subsequent council action on this project. Is that right?
So I'll defer a little bit, but I think what we'll have is the council action will come in June for the initial land conveyance, the purchase option. Then we would likely, the next thing that would happen would be the approval of the entitlements with this body. But we do imagine coming back, and I'd let Abby speak to this, more potentially to the council to approve a development agreement, which would be one of the things that the purchase option outlines. So potentially with the development plan and design review approval, you would be making a recommendation on the development agreement that would go to council.
Got it. Thank you. Those are all my questions.
Thank you. Any other follow-up, board member, or Vice President Isa?
I just have a question, like, from what I've heard about Skyhawk Street. So if Skyhawk Street is going to remain, is there going to be a sidewalk on that street as part of this project?
I think at the moment, since it's not envisioned in the MIP, it wouldn't, we wouldn't anticipate any new sort of future improvements, permanent improvements to Skyhawk, since there's a very real possibility that it could go away as a right-of-way. So it would essentially exist in its current condition until we either made it a permanent right-of-way and had a new plan for it with a future phase, or it became part of a subsequent development.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Thank you to my fellow board members for all those great questions. I just heard a couple of things that I wanted to follow up on. The report mentioned storage tanks for water and oil, and I was just wondering, like, where that would be. Is it where the DI, or that circular thing? Is that what it is? Okay.
Yes, so the DI is the deionized water. That's the circle at the top. There are two circles where Brian has his hand on the screen. Those are the oil. And then there's a secondary containment tank of similar size, which is, also has the oil in it. So those are the four tanks on-site.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Then my other question, there was a mention of when the applicant would know the employee count. I was just curious, like, how is that determined and why is it a question? Because in the presentation, I think it said the estimate was 250. I don't know if staff or the applicant has more info on that. We are anticipating 250 employees. We will have probably a much better understanding of that as the months go on. That number will be refined. Currently, we are ramping up significantly, so we're, you know, we're currently around 80, will be 100 before the end of this year. But 250 will be the approximate estimate for now. I can get back to you on when we'll have a more accurate date. And, sorry, you probably should have stayed standing, because, sorry. Fighting a little bit of a cold here, but I am curious, I heard about the pros about Alameda. Can you speak a little bit to the pros and cons for City of Livermore? If you're able to. Yeah, I would say, you know, both jurisdictions, we're very fortunate to have the cooperation and the sponsorship from both jurisdictions. Very similar to Alameda, we have the sponsorship with the Economic Development Director and Planning there as well. There's not a lot of cons. A lot of it has to do with timeframe and being able to achieve entitlements. So we're really looking at kind of, you know, schedule impacts across both sites. You know, community engagement is a big part of that as well, ensuring that there's a partnership with the jurisdiction and with the local community members is a big part of the effort we're doing with Alex. So far, again, can't speak poorly of either jurisdiction. It's been very positive across the board.
Great. Thank you so much.
Those are all my questions. And with that, let's move to public comments.
So far, we've got five in person, and some hands starting to raise online. We'll start with Abby Thornleman.
Thank you again, Abby Thornleman, Director of Base Reuse and Economic Development. And I wanted to speak in public comment with the city as landlord, landlord, landowner, excuse me. And just really clarify for folks, because I think it can be confusing, that out at Alameda Point, the city does own the majority of the land. And so we're really working in two functions. City as regulator, which Director Ty and Brian went over in their presentation, and is your responsibility, and city as landowner negotiating the real estate deal. And through that real estate deal, we are negotiating the infrastructure improvements that will occur offsite as consideration for the value of the land. So that's what we're getting in exchange for this. And so just because that can be confusing, I just wanted to reiterate it. Forgive me if you all understood that, and everybody understood that, but I just thought it was important to note that. And so we're negotiating, City Engineer Wickstrom and I are at the table across from Pacific Fusion negotiating what the package of improvements are that is a portion of the master infrastructure plan that Pacific Fusion and Heinz would deliver through this. As you may be aware, the master infrastructure plan, when it was approved in 2014, and then when it was updated in 2020, in 2020 had a price tag of $700 million. And so gradually, obviously, that's probably a lot higher now in 2025, but gradually, our goal with these developments is to ensure that we are able to build the infrastructure we need to support development and leasing and use of the property. And this has been the biggest hurdle for development in the Enterprise District, the area that's south of West Atlantic Avenue, is that all of the infrastructure is Navy era. It all needs to be replaced. And so that is why we are so supportive of this project. So I just wanted to share that information, and obviously, you all know that we are here as a resource. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Jonathan DeLong.
For the board, thank you for having me. I'm Jonathan DeLong. I'm an Alameda resident. I'm also the Executive Director of the REEP Climate Center here in town, providing ecological experiences and climate job training. And I wanted to come and just lend some support to this, and I will do so by also giving you some context for some other things I do. I do a lot of things, I'll only share a few. One of those is I'm on the Alameda County Workforce Development Board, where I sit for a green job policy and strategy for our 1.7 million residents. I'm on the Navy and EPA Restoration Advisory Board for the cleanup of the base, and the Sea of Oriz adaptation planning group for the state and municipality for the island, the estuary, and San Landry Bay. I am deep in this space. I was the 2024 biodiversity facilitator for the MIT Sustainability Summit. I'm a big fan of this organization and the promise of fusion technology in general to help us meet our sustainability goals as a species. But I- meet our sustainability goals as a species. But I'm also really bullish on this for what it can do for Alameda as a community from a jobs perspective. I've been working with Pacific Fusion a little bit through some community outreach. We're hosting the Family Fusion Day at the REEP Center. And I've come to know the team. And I really respect the work that they do and the rigor they're putting into this process. So I'm here to lend some support. And thanks for having me.
Thank you.
Next speaker, James Evans.
Thank you, board members. I'm Alameda to speak. My name is Jim Evans. I'm a retired professor of engineering from Berkeley. I speak in my own voice rather than that at the university. If Pacific Fusion pulls this off, it's going to be a wonderful achievement, roughly corresponding to the invention of the telephone, in my opinion. There is unfortunately an elephant in the room, and that is Pacific Fusion is going to have a nuclear reactor. Now make no mistakes about this. They are attempting to achieve a nuclear reaction in their reactor. That makes it, by definition, a nuclear reactor. So we should bear this in mind when we think about the future with a nuclear reactor down the street. What are they planning to do? They're going to pass something of the order of 100 million amperes in 100 billions of a second through a capsule, a small capsule, probably less than an inch in size. That will be rather like a lightning strike on this capsule. It will be vaporized, and the tritium and deuterium it will contain will be brought to an enormous temperature, millions of degrees, and to a pressure billions, billions of atmospheres. Under those conditions, Pacific Fusion hopes, and there's a reasonable expectation, that they will be able to achieve fusion between the tritium and deuterium. Tritium is a radioactive gas species. And one thing we have to worry about is the escape of the tritium. So in 2011, NBC reported on various places, various nuclear facilities, and they reported that of 65 nuclear facilities they visited, 45 of five of them elite tritium. So it's something to be concerned about. What happens subsequent to this nuclear reaction, heat and neutrons are radiated from this capsule, what's left of the capsule, and are trapped by the water surrounding the device. That's 2 million gallons, which could potentially become radioactive if things go wrong. And what are we going to do? 2 million gallons is three Olympic-sized football swimming pools. So a better home for this place would be Sandia or Livermore National Labs. And Pacific Fusion has reached an agreement with those two labs for something called a comprehensive research and development agreement. And on their website, they praise these two places as having excellent facilities for doing this kind of work. So this facility belongs at Livermore or Sandia. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Kurt Peterson.
Yes. Again, my name is Kurt Peterson. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here. I wanted to also let you know that you had a workshop that wasn't sponsored by the city. They said they had a workshop. They actually had Channel 2 go there so they could get their publicity. They had virtually 100% in favor of the project, which the average person wasn't aware of the workshop at all. So give you a little background real quick myself. I've been on the, well, I'm a former member of the RAB, Restoration Advisory Board out of Alameda Point. Okay. I have something I want to hand to you real quickly, because the last gentleman that spoke with you brought up a key, key point. A little bit extra time for that process right there. Okay. What you have in front of you is a map of the island or the former peninsula. The yellow is the solid ground, and the pink is fill. If you look real carefully, you are right next to the fill zone here. Now, I want you to realize underneath this area is an incredibly large water plume, and it's been there for a long time. And it's moving in the direction that I showed you there. That's moving towards the bay. Okay. They have a beautiful building they're showing you. I mean, gosh, it's gorgeous. But what they aren't talking about, and as this other gentleman happened to state, the professor here in this field, is this project will actually involve by waste byproduct. If they want to tell us it won't, it will in the case of water. Okay, that could be actually a large scale, but it's going to have some radioactivity as far as the byproduct of this. Okay. If it happens to seep down into that water plume, which could be approximately three Olympic-sized swimming pools, and it gets in that plume, it's going to go directly out in the bay. I want you folks to realize that. This isn't just a simple little project. I agree, I agree, just like the other gentleman, this project needs to be handled out where places that are familiar with radioactive projects rather than here. I know you guys are all looking for the dollar signs. We've always looked for the dollar signs out at Alameda Point. But you don't do it with foolishness. Okay?
Thank you.
Next speaker is Don Keller. Is that right?
Thank you. I'd like to donate my time to Kurt. He has a few more minutes.
I have a couple key questions here. Okay. We, as I mentioned, it will have byproduct. All you have to do is look as far as on it. And it's going to have, the general byproduct is, as he was mentioning, it is the tritanium or whatever. That's the general, and it's called heavy water. It sinks. It's heavier than regular water. That's why they use it, and that's the situation on it. The other thing I want to let you know as far as this is, you're looking at a company that hasn't even been around for two years. Two years. It's a startup company. Now, I want you also to realize, and if you look real carefully on the Pacific Fusion, didn't list the upper management. Well, their CEO happens to be Eric Lander. Okay. He's actually very high in the scientific world. He was the science advisor under the Biden administration. He was also forced to resign because of being accused of harassment. You can look it up. It's not me. It's Eric Lander. Okay. You're talking about if he's willing to actually abuse, and he actually admitted it by actually sending out an apology for the people that accused him. If you look at Pacific Fusion, you'll see he is the CEO currently. Okay. If he can harass people as far as at the national government level, just think what he's going to do in the City of Alameda. Let's be wise. Let's choose properly. Let's think about our future. Let's plan moving forward correctly instead of all, there are more questions these people brought up than answers for you today. They just showed you a beautiful building. They didn't tell you how big the poles are that they're talking about, how they're going to conceal the floor or possibly seal the floor or any kind of leakage. That's the important stuff here. Not how nice it looks, not about the lighting, not about the parking, not about the right-of-ways. That is all important. But as far as the safety, and that's what you are really involved with here as far as speaking for the government and the people. Thank you very much. I would say it's a bad project. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much for your comments. And just a friendly reminder for the public, it's three minutes per person. Please don't yield your time to another person so we can move along expeditiously. Next public comment?
Yeah, we'll go to our online speakers next, starting with David Mick.
Yeah, good evening. Thank you for taking my, my slot here. I'm speaking tonight actually in strong support of Pacific Fusion's proposal to develop a renewable and clean tech R and D facility at Alameda Point. My name's David Mick. I'm the owner of Power Engineering Construction. We're a marine construction company headquartered in the Enterprise District adjacent to this parcel. We leased Building 166 and Pier 1 from the City of Alameda. We've been a tenant of Alameda Point since 1997. As one of the first businesses to establish itself, former Alameda Naval Air Station, I've witnessed firsthand the transformation of Alameda Point over the years, and I believe Pacific Fusion can be a crucial part of this ongoing revitalization. I further believe the company's planned investment in infrastructure will breathe new life into largely vacant Enterprise District land, and hopefully spur additional commercial and light industrial development. The investment will lower barriers to entry for follow-on businesses, create professional and educational opportunities, especially for our young people. And further, project has the potential to develop new supply chain opportunities for local businesses, fueling further economic growth. Having worked at Alameda Point for decades, I know just how critical it is for the right, to find the right partner for successful development of Alameda Point. Our infrastructure challenges are real, but with Pacific Fusion's commitment, I'm confident we can overcome them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next speaker is Toby Thiede.
Hello. Thank you, guys. Hi, I'm Toby Thiede. I am actually a student at the University of Pennsylvania. I study physics, business, and tech here. And I'm calling in from Philly tonight. But I just wanted to say that Pacific Fusion, as they mentioned, has the same radiation classification as a hospital. And I don't think that means we get rid of, you know, Alameda Hospital, does it? It's, tritium is the radioactive element here. It's part of the fuel. And yes, it's heavily regulated, but Pacific Fusion is unlikely to have more than a few grams of it on site. I'm pretty sure. It's short-lived. It has a half-life of 12.3 years. It's not uranium. It's not plutonium. I just wanted to put that out there. But beyond that, I've been in Alameda for all of, or all but two of my 19 years, and I'm heavily in support of them. They're, they're doing some really cool stuff. I recently compiled a, a report on venture capital, or for a venture capital firm on promising fusion companies, and I published a paper on fusion fuel supply chains. And so through that, I got to focus on Pacific Fusion's tech a little bit more. I'm confident that they're going to play a significant role in the future of fusion if they can get it right. Their method is similar to the only design that's been proven to get net energy gain right next door in Livermore, as they mentioned. It's a partnership that would be great for the city in advancing our own goals as a community towards clean energy. I spent the summer of 2023 working for CASA in the city to help implement the Climate Action and Resiliency Plan. And I'm certain that collaborating with Pacific Fusion would further demonstrate our commitment to green energy and just being a sustainable community. Not to mention, it'd be wonderful to come home after university and have access to fusion industry on the island, because fusion is what I want to work in, in the future. Cities make decisions all the time. They're tough. And the real, the reality is, few of those have implications for the rest of the world. But this is, this is a different thing. If we get it right, it can change the world in so many different ways, beautiful ways, and, and I hope we go through with that. Thank you.
Next speaker is Francisco Nafria.
Hello, everybody, and good evening. My name is Francisco Nafria. I'm a telecommunications engineer and a resident of Alameda. I'm here to oppose the idea of this project. I think that while fusion energy is often marketed as clean, I think it still comes with serious concerns when placed right by homes and schools. Fusion emits high-energy neutrons that can make reactor materials radioactive, a problem that will be living even when the facility, after it opens, even if the facility eventually closed. The use of tritium, a radioactive form of hydrogen poses a leak risk. It's hard to contain, and it can enter the water, which the facility will be surrounded by, and is nearly impossible to recover once it's released. Also, I don't think Alameda is really equipped for the specialized emergency response infrastructure that this facility would require. And beyond these facts that I've just mentioned, I think the proposal is wrong, and it doesn't fit the community. The location is too close to homes, parks, and schools. And even if the incident risks are low, the perception of danger could deter families and businesses from investing in Alameda. Instead, I would encourage everyone to think about alternative uses. We could think about green business incubators, clean tech hubs, sustainable retail, community spaces. This could really energize the area, support local jobs, and uphold Alameda's commitment to environmental responsibility. And all of that without introducing radioactive risk. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Josh Roden.
Good afternoon. This is Josh Roden with Brookfield. I'm calling in, in support of Pacific Fusion. I think it's an amazing and wonderful opportunity for the City of Alameda to support, support sustainable and renewable energy. And we are a partner in the development of the West Midway Project that includes 700 residential units on Alameda Point. And this would be a, a great addition, creating more opportunities for people to be able to work close to home, and a great mixed-use complementary to what the Alameda Point vision is supposed to be. I, I think it's a wonderful opportunity, and we definitely support it. And thank you, guys, for bringing it.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll come back in person for Brock Grunt.
Good evening. My name is Brock Grunt. I am a 30-plus-year resident of Alameda. I have four kids. They were all born and raised here. Very proud of this city and really excited about this project. I'm really excited about it. I would like nothing more than one of my kids to actually work for Pacific Fusion. There's even that possibility. They're, they're all either have studied engineering or are in the process of studying engineering. So would love to see that. Beyond that, I am currently on the Alameda Economic Advisory Panel, have been since 2016. We developed a plan that this project fits into perfectly. It was a plan that I assume all of you have had a chance to look at. It was put out, I think, four, four to five years ago. That, anyway, it identifies businesses like this that being exactly what Alameda needs and wants. I am also lucky enough to work in Alameda. I'm the president of McGuire and Hester, where construction, heavy civil construction and landscape company. We're based in Harbor Bay. So my life revolves entirely around Alameda, and this is super exciting. The fact that nuclear power, nuclear energy has been put on hold for 50 years in the United States while it's moved forward in other countries, basically due to while it's moved forward in other countries, basically due to fear factors, and I realize some of that fear is well-founded. But we've come a long way, and it's time for us to get our head out of the sand and make use of of all the energy opportunities that are out there, especially something as exciting as this. So thank you for listening.
Thank you.
I think we've got one last speaker. Sylvia Johnson.
Thank you very much. My name is Sylvia Johnson, and I'm a resident of Alameda. I live in Bayport. My background is in material science and ceramics. And I have some concerns, although I really like the idea of fusion energy, of being able to produce electricity in this way, in what is generally, I believe, a very safe way, a good way. However, I think that it is the wrong place. Unfortunately, it's a good time, but we're in the wrong place here in Alameda. Alameda needs the money, needs the jobs. I know it's all that's all good. But we're talking about a startup. We're talking about a startup that's been around, as they say, for two years. And I admire people who work for startups, and they have great energy. But often, unfortunately, startups fail. Things go downhill. So we haven't heard a number of things about plans. We haven't heard what happens if they do fail, if this doesn't work? What happens to this building? What happens to the waste? What happens to the whole thing? Another thing we haven't heard is what's the business plan? I don't need the whole business plan, but we're going to do an experiment. Pacific Fusion is going to do an experiment. I'm an experimentalist. I like experiments. That's great. But what happens then? A whole facility has been built, and what's going to happen to it then? What is the plan? Are we then going to come back and ask for permission to have perhaps a power generator here? Who knows? But once people are here and we have this facility, we don't know what's going to happen, and I haven't heard a single word. I went to the meeting on May 1 and didn't get any answers to my questions. And here we are again, proposing to put up a big building, and Pacific Fusion's going to pay a lot of money, and it's going to create jobs, and that's wonderful. It's also going to create traffic, and I haven't heard anything about a bus service. I'll just add that one in. But we don't know what's going to happen after these first few years when we hope, if this goes, if this were to go ahead, I would hope they would be successful. But what happens if they're not, and what happens if they are? Where are those answers? So thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
We have no further speakers.
No more speakers? Okay. All right. Thank you so much to the public for your comments and thoughtful feedback. We'll go ahead and close with a comment. Before I bring it back to the board for discussion, I heard a theme, more so on the opposed side, about safety concerns. I was wondering if the applicant or staff would care to respond to that.
These are all great questions, and you know, one of the reasons why we have a number of engagement opportunities is we welcome the public to come up to us during those engagement activities and ask us questions directly. One of the questions that I heard that I can answer directly is, you know, what about the reuse of this facility? The good news is we are funded for several years down the road. We are funded through 2030 and plus, and we are still working on our funding opportunities, so we're not going anywhere anytime soon. However, as part of the radiological license, we do need to have a decommissioning plan. So we we can't obtain a license without having a step-by-step procedural plan of how we're going to return the facility back to original conditions. So this is something that's, again, regulated with the California Department of Health. Was there something else that I can?
Yeah, I think that's great. So thank you.
Sure. Yeah, thank you.
All right. Does any board member want to start off with comments or feedback? Board Member Sue?
I can, I'll take the first cut, I guess. Just want to thank the public for for coming out and calling in and making comments. You know, I think, you know, they raise a good point about this. Obviously, you know, the company being a startup, fusion being relatively among kind of energy sources new. So I understand the skepticism, and I think you're also working in a world of of nuclear, which in of itself is, you know, with all the stories and events that have occurred. So it's it's definitely a sensitive topic, so I appreciate them bringing it up. And I I look forward to seeing, you know, further aspects of the project, the plans, the development agreement, to see, you know, how some of those concerns are addressed. I'm glad to hear about the decommissioning plan. That was one thing I wrote down. You know, aspects about, you know, what if there's a spill? What if there's leakage? Would be great to see all those things addressed. This comment is more directed for for city staff. It'd be great to see, and there just may not be any examples of this because it's so new, but I would love to see if there are other jurisdictions right now dealing with similar projects, having to figure out in terms of site location, is this a good place? What conditions are they imposing? You know, what other requirements are they having? You know, a quick Google will tell you there's lots of fusion startups in the country, so I'm sure they're doing something similar. You know, I will note that the Livermore site is also near homes and an airport, so I don't pick your poison, I guess, of, you know, what what is, what's safer? You know, it's unless you're, you know, picking somewhere where you're just totally off the grid, it's it's tough. And so, yeah, I mean, just going back to my original point, this is it's it's a new area, so a new kind of emerging area, so there's there's definitely a lot to look into. Let's see, I think I think that's it for me for now, and and thank you again for the presentation and the comments. I do appreciate it.
Thank you, Board Member Sue. I think the applicant maybe wanted to expound a little bit more before I bring it back to the board, so sorry to interrupt, but did you want to approach Dias?
Yeah, so I wanted to kind of clarify a couple things. So, you know, as as far as the comment regarding whether or not this is a reactor, the amount of tritium that we'll have on site, I'm going to make an analogy here. So there are tritium exit signs that are still used in facilities today. So tritium is a glow and it has glow-in-the-dark characteristics, and it's used for a lot of glow-in-the-dark applications. Back in the 90s, you could get a tritium watch. You can get, you know, tritium keychains. The amount of tritium that we'll have on site at any given time is about a third of an exit sign. So we're we're talking about a very low volume of radiological material. There are a lot of concern, very valid concerns when you move into a scaled energy production facility. Part of the presentation that I provided earlier was to kind of distinguish between the two facilities. The R and D facility that we're building is very different from an economies of scale, from a material handling standpoint, from a containment standpoint, than what will be a generation facility. To answer one of the questions more directly, we do not have plans, and we we won't have plans of turning this facility into a generation plant. This is a completely different project that will happen somewhere else.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate that clarification, and I think it helps address some of the comments Board Members Sue brought up as well. Any other board members?
Oh, I just, I mean, I just had some comments going back to the building itself. What is the roof? Is it just a flat roof? Are there? Do you do you know what you're doing? It's it's a really big mass, and I'm wondering what's happening in the roof or with the roof?
The roof will have roughly a quarter inch per foot slope. That's the typical slope on an industrial building, so it's flat from probably what you'd think of a typical roof with a parapet all the way around.
Okay, so what is the structure of this building?
What is the structure? It'll be an open web, like steel-type joists, with either a metal deck or a wood roof, and that is still being worked out with the structural engineer.
So are there going to be solar solar panels in the roof? It seemed like it from the aerial view.
What? So there will be a couple things to determine that, but first, we'll be working with a mechanical and electrical engineer to determine the code requirements. So there are some requirements for solar in the building code based on the use, but you're that's sort of like eight steps ahead from where we are right now. So those were depicted in the aerial because there's often solar panels on these types of buildings, but we're not to that point yet of knowing if solar will be part of the design.
Thank you. I guess just thinking of the scale of the building, because it's sometimes hard to see from, you know, these elevations, but these walls, especially in the taller volume, is like an eight-story building. So I was wondering if there might be opportunities to treat some of the walls maybe as a green wall or that that I'm just making it as a suggestion. I understand the blue. It's a branding color, but maybe there are opportunities in some of other parts of the concrete walls to provide a softer, a softer kind of feeling of the walls, maybe at the lower portions of the wall. I don't know. I I'm just kind of wondering if there's a way to soften this huge massing that is going to be, you know, eight stories of concrete. I think that that's it for now. Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you. Board Member Sahiba?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for all the public comments. As this is a workshop, I understand, you know, I'm really appreciative of all the discussion. And, you know, as a planning board, our main sort of charge is to really look at land use policy. And so I think all the conversation around regulations and such really, I'm imagining it's coming to this board because some of those boxes have been checked by the city already in order to make sure that there's a clear strategy in place or or they're continuing discussions to get it to a place where globally, we we all can be comfortable about the program of the building in order to take it to the next step as far as making sure that within the context of what is being developed, it will work for the overall city, the master planning that we've done in the city, and again, the land use strategies that we've continued to try to put in place. When I step back and think of development at Alameda Point, I think it's important to continue to see what type of diversified program and businesses and residences are able to create this mixed-use community that's over many, many decades will evolve. So I I think that, you know, I'm appreciative of that. Obviously, the city's thinking really long-term of infrastructure and how to get us eventually to a place where this land that's out there can be fully utilized in a in a beneficial way for all citizens and and folks who who either work or live in the city. I think when I I know there's multiple steps that the project's going to continue to take to eventually get to a place where, you know, we hopefully globally as a community can feel comfortable about where it's headed. And there can be several different paths that I would recommend the applicant continue to take as far as community outreach and such to make sure the community stays well-informed, which it sounds like there's already been some steps in that direction. And I think those continuing would be great. I know that there's a separate subcommittee that's looking to be set up amongst the planning board and the and and the staff in order to organize the next steps on the on the workshop and eventually, you know, coming to a place where there is clarity on all the various, you know, aspects that we've been discussing this evening. So I'm encouraged by what's been developed so far. If I just step back and think of, again, the project and the building and its use, I'd say that there's still, there's a lot of solid facade. It it's going to be natural for this type of industrial use or R and D facility, I should say. And I know there's been a lot of design thinking around how to break this large building down, which I which I appreciate. I would say that in the next steps, it would be great to see the various approaches and the sense of arrival to this building, and then the thought of the other context around it and how, I think, some of the discussion this evening also revolved around connections back to the community and and bike paths, pedestrian paths. I think that analysis and how one moves adjacent to the building, you know, by foot or even approaches of by vehicle, I think all those strategies need to be set really clearly in our next discussions. So we understand what the character of the building is as you approach from these various directions. I I think that as that investigation's being done, it'd be really helpful for us to understand also some architectural clues that could be potentially utilized, again, in in the sense of arrival to the building, like, how do I find the front door? What does it mean to arrive, you know, on secondary streets versus primary streets? And, you know, the the basically, the the connection to the context, we understand, you know, there's some adjacent buildings that will potentially stay for a long time, some context that's going to eventually change because over time there'll be new development. But I think all those elements of not just the program, and there's a lot happening on the internal aspects of this of of this building, on this project. But the engagement to the street edge, as was starting to be alluded to, and I know there's going to be more work done on that, is going to be, I think, very important. And I I would say also sort of what it feels like in the evening, and it's it's a big building, so how does the lighting work? Does does the lighting start to focus more on the street edge and not really highlight the the building at night because of the proximity to the neighborhood and such? I know it fits within the height limits that have been established, so I don't really, I don't have any issues on that front. But if there are thoughts on thinking of, I think, it'd be important for us to also see some perspectives from more the east side, looking at the building, like, not aerial, but actually street view perspectives. So those those would be really helpful to to get a sense of those approaches. But beyond that, I know I'm not sure the timeline that staff's put forward, I know it's aggressive because there's multiple options that are being explored with sites, but it would be good for us to get a sense of on the next, on the next series of meetings, what will be the focus or agenda? So if it's if it's more contained, we don't have to stay global on on the next ones. We can sort of tackle various aspects on on multiple meetings and hopefully give meaningful feedback at that time. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think when we wrap up our comments, we'll do the selection of the subcommittee, and at that point, we'll be able to address some of these great points that you brought up. So it sounds like, I I'm just sorry, I'm jumping ahead, and I am wondering from staff, that's kind of like the process that we have in mind. So when it comes back, a lot of these are tackled, and that parallel subcommittee process.
I think that's right. I think we'd be looking to use the subcommittee to to develop and investigate some of those questions on the design and and those similar questions that staff has been wrestling with. And then so that when we do come back to this board, we've we're we've got some of those specific things for you to chew on and and provide more direct feedback on. That's sort of the vision. That's sort of the vision. We'll sort of see how it evolves and what the right tempo is for subcommittee versus coming back to the board. But it'd be really useful to have that as a resource for us.
Thanks for clarifying. Board Member Wang?
Yeah, thank you, thank you to everyone for this discussion. This is very exciting. I'm just going to geek out for a second. I remember reading about nuclear fusion as a kid, so it's super cool to be at this crossroads at potentially the precipice of commercializing this technology and contemplating it being right here in Alameda is very cool as well. Vice President Ariza brought this up, and so grateful she kind of flagged this because it wasn't, it didn't really register for me before. But we heard about Skyhawk, you know, the city having maybe flexibility for Skyhawk. We're not really sure if it's going to stay or go, same for Orisqini. So I kind of, you know, it makes me wonder whether, and maybe just think of this as a question rather than as a comment right now. It almost feels to me like the entrance of the building might be facing the wrong way? Is it, is it maybe? And it might be a bias that's coming out of the way that the site is drawn now, but if Skyhawk might go away, shouldn't the front of the building be facing Orion instead? Where we know there's a future street, for sure? So that's a question. I feel somewhat differently about character than, I think, Board Members Sahiba and Ariza. And this might, this might just be a matter of degree, but I think I've heard comments about breaking the scale down and comments about compatibility with the residential neighborhood to the east. To me, Alameda Point is a district of large buildings and large blocks. It's kind of the place of the big, beautiful industrial building, and I think what's being proposed here is wholly consistent with that. There might be, you know, there might be places to improve on that, but I would just say, let's be thoughtful about not overdoing it. I don't think it's the job of this building to try to meet bungalow scale. I think, you know, from the site now, it's not even very easy to see the residential neighborhood to the east. I think Central makes a pretty clean break between the two areas, and they are quite distinct. So I just wanted to share that point of difference on that, on that, on that comment. Lastly, I do want to reprise a comment that was a bit of a theme, I think, the last time we had a clean tech item before this board. The fact that Alameda has had a number of companies dedicated to this sector should, I think, be a point of pride for our community. And I think one of the things that came up last time was, you know, a number of us weren't even quite aware that we had these really great efforts and these really great startups and firms working toward these goals at Alameda Point. And wouldn't it be cool if there were some sort of coordinated interpretive program that tied all of that together? I did have an opportunity to speak to the applicant some weeks ago about this, and I think that Pacific Fusion was maybe contemplating some level of interpretive program within the building. So I would just say, keep going, keep thinking about that. And I think to base review staff and to planning staff, do continue to keep that in mind. I think more so than one-off interpretive programming, we do have an opportunity for a kind of base-wide or island-wide program that could tie a lot of these efforts together, and I think that would be really cool for the island.
Thank you, Board Member Wang. And I agree with a lot of the comments my fellow board members. And I also want to just thank staff for the great presentation, the applicant for bringing this to us and to the public, for participating and sharing all your feedback for us. And I will disclose, I also met with the applicant, I meant to mention that earlier in our round of questions. But I agree that this is a really great opportunity for the city of Alameda. It meets many of our goals in terms of job creation, clean tech, climate, the sense of innovation and community that Board Member Wang spoke to, infrastructure improvements and partnerships with the community, like the high school program. So there, it sounds like there's a lot that we could look forward to, should this move forward. I think Board Member Sue brought up a great point about continuing the community engagement and education process with members of the public. And it sounds like the applicant is doing that and taking it seriously, so that's really great to know and observe. And, you know, putting aside all the great things, all the benefits, our role as a planning board is to interpret the application for compliance, and this is in compliance with the zoning, with the land use, with the enterprise district, and so on and so forth. So that is great, so. And I think there's a great need for the subcommittee to go through some of these, like, more detailed items. So, yeah, and again, the health regulations are being done through the city, county, and state, as the applicant spoke to, which is very reassuring. So with that, again, just echo a lot of the comments from my fellow board members. And then, at this point, should we appoint subcommittee members? Or take a stab at it? Do you need some volunteers, or?
Yeah, I mean, I think that'd be great. I think maybe just to sort of make sure that we're hearing the board's feedback and know what to sharpen our pencils on in order to sort of really, we heard some comments about what are some of these other examples and really drilling down on the safety aspects and making sure we understand that process and how that looks, continuing with the community engagement theme there on that aspect. And then on the design, sort of working on some of these, you know, arrival questions, some of these building elevation questions on how to treat these, you know, these large facades, what's the material, what's the approaches? So I think that that's the area where the subcommittee can really help staff to refine, you know, that skin and element of the building in order to bring back something that fits with what you're looking for.
Great, thanks for doing a great job summarizing all our comments. Oh, and Director Tai?
Thank you, Brian, for that summary. President Sisneros, Planning Board Members, Allen Tai, Plan Building, Transportation Director. On the safety issue, I also just want to throw out some of the facts. Fusion technology is considered clean tech. And then when you ask, or when you think about, well, what sort of work has the city done in terms of hazardous materials out at Alameda Point? Well, if you look at our 2014 EIR for Alameda Point, we have a whole section on hazardous materials, section 4-J, I believe. And in it, it discusses the prospects of new development and how it would, it may include the use of hazardous materials. And it also explains the framework around how the city would go about approving businesses that use hazardous materials. And that is all disclosed in the EIR. The public speaker earlier had also mentioned groundwater impacts and the prospects of new development impacting groundwater. That issue is also addressed and anticipated in the 2014 EIR. And the analysis basically discloses that with hazardous materials in California, the regulatory framework is so robust that if you follow all of the state regulations and all of the regulatory hurdles, the remediation plans, the decommissioning plans, that if there was any impact, it would be less than significant. But obviously, in this case, talking about fusion, a clean tech, it actually is going to be a use that would be cleaner than when the Navy was operating out at Alameda Point. So really, from staff's perspective, the work that we're going to do with the SEQA is really just, like I said earlier, dotting our i's, crossing our t's, ensuring that the project specifications meet the codes and regulations, that the city receives all of the regulatory plans, that we can show are meeting state guidelines so that we can issue the building permit. And really, this is an opportunity for new development, new investment, to improve the physical environment at the base than what we're seeing today from when the, what the Navy has left behind. So I just want to put those facts out there, thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you so much. And that's even more reassuring that the existing EIR already considered many of these things, and so this process will build off of that, so that makes a lot of sense. Great, all right. Bringing it back to the board, if no other follow-up comments or feedback, do we have any volunteers for the subcommittee?
Sure.
Yay, all right. Vice President Ariza, any other volunteers?
Can we volunteer the absent board members?
Yes. I'm like trying not to laugh, but then I cough. We can, we can, I just want to.
We were thinking maybe one of the absent board members, and that leaves a second one from the present board members that we might like to have on our committee.
Yeah, yeah, and we could solve for this over email, but yeah. I'll maybe give another beat in case anybody else wants to volunteer.
Well, we've certainly got a lot of feedback, and I think we also have been giving some of the similar feedback to the applicant already. And we want to drill down, and I think drilling down on, for instance, the street frontages and access routes, and I hear the lighting and things like that. We can also just work that out.
Yeah, and we could have a two-subcommittee, subcommittee, right?
Yes, a two-person committee is fine.
Okay, so thank you, Vice President Ariza. And we'll follow up over email and see if our absentee members are willing to participate. Okay?
And staff will help facilitate that, so there are no violations of the Brown Act on that issue.
Great, thank you. Any other comments from staff before we close this agenda item?
Thank you for all your feedback, we'll be back soon.
Great, thank you. All right, that's ending Agenda Item 5A. We'll move on to Item 6, Staff Communications.
Let's see, Item 6A is Recent Actions and Decisions. Those are listed in the attachment to your packet. Four recent design review and demolition permits were issued on your behalf, and those are still in their appeal period. Item 6B, I just mentioned that upcoming meeting agenda includes the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance update. That'll be coming to you with our consultant in tow with his recommendations, the capital improvement program, annual report, and general plan conformance, and also the Ensigne terminals. They're looking to set up some interim uses while they're still developing their plans and permits.
Great, thank you. Any public comments for this agenda item?
We have no speakers.
Okay, great. Closing Agenda Item 6, next Agenda Item, Board Communications. Any items from the board? The none? Okay, non-agenda public comments, anyone on Zoom or in the room? Would like to speak?
No speakers.
All right, and with that, it's 9:05, and we are adjourned.